Session, the November 10th. Meeting of the county council will start with a moment of silence and then. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To your republic, for its fans. One may even come out there and have the end this one with liberty and justice for all. Let's start off with the minutes of the. October 16th and the October 20th joint meeting.
We'll have to do two votes on that, sorry. One of them, Jim and Todd.
We'll do these in separate votes. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to the October 16th minutes? Jim and Todd were not present at the 16th meeting. Hearing no additions or corrections, can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Dudley? We don't get a second?
Second.
Mr. Carver? All in favor say aye. Aye. Aye though. The October 20th joint meeting, I believe Jeff wasn't at that, Jeff Fisher was not at that meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve those minutes? Jimmy Key? Is there a second? Dudley? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Six oh. Reported collections as submitted.
I don't know. Well, take the names out.
Dudley was the first, it was seconded by Todd Hegg. That's funny, save some time. All in favor say aye. 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 Seven oh.
But that next one, it shows forms report, which is also in the third.
Yes, reported, yeah.
Once her monthly report and once her report of collections.
Oh, okay.
Review and acknowledge the clerk's monthly report for October 2025. Has everyone had an opportunity to view the report?
I see that in the, as an attachment.
I actually got that on. It's on the first one she sent out. And then she did a correction to leave and then we sent the addendum. If Dudley has seconded, then you will. Denise has made the motion to approve the monthly report.
Second.
Seconded by Jeff Fisher. All in favor say aye. 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 Seven oh. The report acknowledged the treasurer's bank reconciliation and monthly comparison reports. Everyone can have an opportunity to view that and are there any questions that you may have?
That one is not. No, it's not attached.
No, you're right. How about we table back to our joint meeting? Can I get a motion to table?
Sure.
A seconded. Second Denise, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Seven oh. Department head reports. Good morning, department heads. Who would like to go first? Mr. Candles?
Not a lot for it on, uh, they get notification from the company on the remounts. They work for last. Uh, they were waiting on decals, the vinyl that on the truck, once that was done. Also got a phone call last week, we would take the trade in over, they'll strip out the radios and the metal. I'll have it, put it in the new one, then we would go get, pick it up. Did not get the phone call last week, so we'll be out today and figure out where they're at with that, so. Hopefully here in the next week or two, we should receive that truck, that remodel. I know it's on the agenda later down there, I have representatives here to discuss the source of all program. Three of you were there on last Monday, that presentation, I thought maybe with the four that didn't get to hear it, could hear about, if you had any questions for them. But I don't have time, so I've got right now.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, we are out, well, we're trying to get out over Sanders, we'll put the Sanders in the trucks this morning, I need out just to. Hit close the list up. Hold on to that, it's alright. Um, I did give you guys a handout for our next. Federal Eighth Bridge, if you would like to pursue, uh, this would be down along Schoolhouse Road. It's our bridge number 39, it is not a restorative bridge yet, but it is. It could possibly become one, um, in the near future, just due to the design of it. I didn't give you a full engineering asset assessment. You would like that I can, it just has the, the cost for the next five years we would like to pursue of. This will be one of our priority lists for that application. I do think you know, you know, here's left one, I just want to run by you. Uh, application are due decently, so.
So I saw they have a preliminary. Probable cost on page eight. Obviously, this is subject to change on the figure that they gave. That gives us a really good idea?
Yes.
And when, when would this come into place?
Uh, preliminary engineering will start next year, April 6th and, uh. Construction will start in 31, so it'll be about six years.
Okay.
We currently have two federal bridges going on right now. They're moving along pretty, pretty good. I don't know if you guys would like to make a decision, if you want me to pursue the application, go ahead and turn it in, doesn't mean that we're going to get this, it's just. An application that we need to turn into the end up. So we can, at least our engine.
As the commissioners already indicated, they wanted you to move forward with your application.
They want to be able to speak to you, the council.
Well, there's no harm, no foul to apply.
Right. I'll make a motion then. Even as the head of the allies, you get a federal money, you know, your place to spread.
I'll second that.
Also, this would be an 80/20 split, maybe on the, yes, I see it's five million. On this four million, federal funds, you want to.
All in favor to have Jason go ahead and apply for the funding, say aye. Aye. Seven oh.
The one on the grade there, just down from the, the county. Uh, is that, is that supposed to be instructed this, this year?
No, that'll be, uh, one seven, they pushed, they pushed that back, I believe. We will be opening bids on the 17th of this month for our. Next locally funded bridge, which is on Foster Road, it's bridge 103, this north of 100. So, um, once we get those bids in, I would probably ask for a conference if possible, or originally. Since I'll have a night as a prize, that's, that's. That's all I really have to be.
Perfect, thank you. Say say about them. Amber?
I always have part of that.
So I had some questions from some of the council regarding the ag land sold. Uh, so I prepared a spreadsheet here, give a chart of what the values were, those acres in the Ranger solar project. Twenty four K, twenty five. Some of the land values, about 6.7 million in value, that was all ag land assessed. For 25 K, 26, we did change that from ag land to solar and they filled, um, the assessment. Um, I went out and looked at all the parcels, there are 11 of them, they're still farm ground. So we changed those back to farm ground, so that's what the breakdown here is for 25 K, 26. The value of ag. Uh, shows, um, 732 acres that's still in the data. And, um, the rest of it, we changed to commercial, unusable, undeveloped. So the value for that is 12.6, uh, bringing that to a little over 25 K, 26 to 14.3 million in assessed values. For next year. Um, it's going to the full solar rate, not the commercial undeveloped rate. Uh, so you'll see the solar is going to jump to 24.6 million. On that. Um, we got about 1,843 acres that are in the solar, that's already being developed, solar, out of all those. Um, as far as how we break that down for price, the ag rate, the table low, the value per acre. The ag rate on 24 K, 26 was 2,280 an acre. 2025, 2180. Um, next year it'll be 2180 as well. The commercial undeveloped usable acreage is 7,000 an acre, is how that's applied. And then the full solar rate, when it goes to the full solar rate, will be 13,726 an acre. Um, now if you do the math of the acres times the rate, it's never going to match. Because the ag rate also has a productivity factor that's applied to it. So some farm ground was better than the other farm grounds where it might be a 1.3. And you may have background that's point eight, I seen was point five. So you're never going to be able to use that base rate. Times your acres, you get a assessed value, that's all in on what that productivity factor is for that land type. Or soil type. And I think I did the bottom one backwards for phase two, I used the wrong acre, I used the solar acre, it's not the ag. So that would have to be changed, it's actually 732 acres, not the eight, 1840, so I'm sorry about that, I can only do that and get you those numbers. Uh, if you're curious about the phase two, my brand to the town.
Thirty two.
Yeah.
Seven thirty two.
The very bottom one under phase two, look, these are the acres that are still in ag ground, I used the solar, or the. Solar acres, not the ag, so, eh, acres. But it will be an injection, I don't know how soon they're going to start phase two, I did get a phone call, uh, from one of the landowners that's using their. Parcel is the parking site for that, um. The way she made a talk, it'd get nice start to phase two next spring, but I'm not sure. Um, also. The acres that we're going to charge, the whole solar rate will be what's behind the fencing. I've asked the solar company for the number of acres behind the fence and I have not received anything from them. Um, but thankfully, next spring, we are doing another flyovers, we'll have the aerials. I'll be able to calculate the acres behind the fence this next spring based on the aerials. It would be helpful if I could get back to the solar company, but. Haven't been real receptive as far as getting that data.
We only appreciate.
I was hearing this morning, do the bottom, because I thought you guys were going to ask me, well, how many, how many acres are actually under the solar? So it's kind of last minute thing, hopefully during this morning, and sorry, I grabbed the wrong, wrong acres there on the bottom.
If you just want to send us a meeting, that'd be fine.
Any other questions?
I know this isn't your department, but it's just because I'm curious. Phase two, is it under the current? Permit, or would it have to be permitted for a second phase?
Well, it's the parcels, when we changed it, it was all the parcels that run permit, that's how we identified what parcels to change. I can tell you there was another parcel under that was not. In the permit, so I'm not for sure if it's intended for solar or if it's. A right away, we had another parcel that was used as a right away for some enhanced machine lines. Um, it's never going to be solar, but they gave right away, so I don't know if this parcel. Is a right, another right away, or if it's intended for solar, so we'll just have to wait and see. Uh, they will not be able to put that in solar without any, for any, so. I'm not even sure if they can use it as a right away, but they can use it aside.
Does anyone have any questions for you, Amber?
Those, those ag acres, they're, they're not in production.
No, I drove out, looked down, because every one of them, they all had crops on them. They didn't have crops on them, I moved them to the 7,000 acre, I didn't name them the ag. I said, there's, there's 11 that have not been touched yet, 11 acres, or 11 parcels, sorry.
Didn't he have, have no crops on them?
Yeah.
There was some that did.
We appreciate you, thank you.
The, the only other thing I have for my office is, I know that there's been some discussion about RGIS software no longer being supported next March. Um, I've been working with Sidwell, they're going to come in and migrate all our data to the new software. Uh, they're going to start that. Next month, this month or next month. And then they will be here February to train us on a new system. We've got the money in our current budget to cover it, so it's no issue there. Um, but there will be a. A gap of us training to learn a new system, um, the first part of the year. That's the only other thing in our office, by now, our reassessment. Uh, the deadline for it is December 31st and we're on track to finish our reassessment, so. Very, very good shade with.
Thank you, thank you. Nina? KW, do you have anything from the commissioners? Perfect. Alright, let's move forward then. Additionals. Additionals, coroner for the autopsy expense of $10,000. Clerk for contractual services, $22,449, and that's for the software and voting machine updates. Um, and circuit court overtime security of $3,000. And that is to finish and out. To the end of the year. Yeah. And I will open this hearing at. Nine twenty one. Any comments from the public? Mr. Shaw?
Autopsy, is that a 29 autopsy, one incident?
Josh?
Four. And then we have $150 facility fee.
Any other further comment, Carol, do you have anything? Council, do you have any? Questions, concerns, or concerns for the additionals?
Just concerned, well, it sounds for the technicals out of. Did we decide that in parish best services? That will be the key voting machines?
Yeah, yes, I think we did decide.
And the other two? I didn't think of the lifetime, I don't think so.
I would think if. Out of the other two, for sure, probably the overtime. I'm not sure about the autopsy. It's pretty cool. No, we basically cut it back. We cut that back, didn't we, last year, Josh, on your autopsy line item?
It's, our, our starting price was the same as was last year.
Okay.
If it was going to be a seven, we have enough covers on more. And then we know how that goes, yeah.
Right, you can have it on.
Yeah, I get it by tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, part of that. So we have agreed, human voting for the contractual services. The autopsy, you had questions about coming out of public safety for that, Dudley?
Well, it's just, that depends, I have to, I have to be my first, which is taking that one, having to say.
What do we have in there, Kim? I don't, I don't have those.
For our total salary, we have, um. You're at 43,000.
Yeah, in public safety, yeah, uh, it says, the fund balance is 236,000.
Let's do that, let's go ahead and take the autopsy and the overtime security out of public safety. Yes.
After this, I think Kim's on his own. Him calling.
Make a motion to approve the additional, as presented. Well, I'm going to close the public hearing. Um, hearing no further, okay, so Josh.
Just one more question, is that, does that work, the, sorry, how does that work with the? With an autopsy that county pays for?
By state statute.
Really?
Yes.
So there's no expense for, to the family or.
If the coroner's office means an autopsy necessary, it is in state statute that the county pay for that. If the coroner's office says there is no autopsy necessary and family requests that, then it is then private pay and that's over.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing then, I'm going to close the public hearing at nine twenty five. Denise, you would like to make a.
Approve the additional assessment.
Seconded by Jeff Fisher. All in favor say aye. Aye. Seven. Transfers. In the highway department. From, uh, by two minutes to gravel, $845.73. The ambulance department from equipment of $45,000 to part time for 45, and from jailers. $4,000 to overtime, $4,000. Does anybody have any questions regarding those transfers?
Just. The equipment, it's not going to be something that's going to come up, we're going to need equipment money.
Running numbers out, right, we'll still have enough there, we were to purchase things and still be okay. We can reroute it, uh, we will look at monitors, but we can look at other things and we'll still be okay. And try and avoid doing additional, so I find that.
Any other questions, council? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the transfers listed? Jimmy Key?
Second.
Seconded by Todd Hegg. All in favor say aye. 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 Seven zero. This time, Kim presenting. Kim, are you still with us?
I am. Can you hear me? Hello? I am. Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Hello? Hello? I have sound on my end.
Well, um, I'm on the Wega Committee and we, we, we're having a meeting tonight, or Saturday or later on. So. You know, I, Kim can present to the, uh, board when we have a joint meeting, what we get, uh, that sort of thing, so.
Hello?
Very well.
I can.
Hi, you can hear me now, sorry about that, hey, thank you for letting me come online this morning, I just wanted to give you an update. Uh, there's several things going on, so I, we have a meeting this evening, as Jeff said. Um, and I just wanted to kind of review some of that stuff with you, just so you're kind of up to date. Um, the DNR grant, we do have Anita Dankie, uh, working on that, and she was working with it previously. Um, so she's helping with the DNR grant and the Indiana landmarks grant. And we've got a subcommittee together, um, so we're working with the contractor, HWC, Anita, um, a couple board members. And so that has been very effective in getting that project going. And, um, the Wega building has started some work on the back of the building. And they do have the blueprints to the engineer, uh, which is HWC, uh, wait, I'm sorry, KJG. And they are working on the front facade and getting all of that done. Um, so there's movement, maybe not in the right season, but there's a lot going on there and. Um, I've been in contact with the IDC, they did receive the pre-commitment, uh. It's not a contract, but it was a pre-commitment that the project has been chosen, um, and to, to move forward, and so we're moving forward with them on, on that. I also want to let you know that Ready has, uh, $65 million and it's, uh. It was the Lily Endowment match and they are, uh, dog earring, uh, 60, let's see, 65 million for arts and culture projects for our region. So if anybody has any arts and cultural projects that they need that are shovel ready, um, those. those proposals can go in in January for extra Ready 2.0 funds, so I have one that I'm working on, but if anybody in any other community has anything, please have them contact me. Also, oh, I passed the CD BG 301 course, I'm taking my final exam today, which is why I'm here. So I am, hopefully I will be certified in January if I get 75% on that test. And then the other thing was the ARPA funds will be invoiced for the project by December 31st.
Perfect.
Tell them, tell them what you'll be able to do after your schooling.
I'm sorry, after what?
Tell them what you will be, be able to do after your schooling.
Yeah, so that will certify me to write Oakr grants, if there are any I would recommend, they do have planning grants and they have construction grants, destruction, construction grants are a lot more in depth, so if you have anything that's a big project, I would rather go for something that's a bigger infrastructure need for some of those things, just personally, that'd be my recommendation.
Does anybody have any questions for Kim? Okay, Kim, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Dana Stonebreaker had one thing, she texted me, she can't be here, obviously, because she is on console and with all the accidents, they're very busy. She says their training is still in progress, doing very well. She is hoping to have the consoles by March. She is working on console and doing her bid work and still needs one more part timer. Andrew Crowe didn't have anything available at this time from the sheriff's department. Okay. Let's move on to Sourcewell presentation, Mr. Eli Haskett.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll probably do this kind of like in the convention meeting last, last week, first of all, is there any general question that we the council might have that I could address? You know, first off, with Sourcewell in general, or if you have any questions on how that works.
I know that Sourcewell kind of acts as the middleman between the entity and the equipment, correct?
Correct, so the bid process, doing it at a local level can be costly, as far as timelines. You know, the, the cost for the municipality to run ads and, and administer, do the administration for the bid process, meetings and all that stuff can be quite costly. So what Sourcewell kind of does, takes that cost and that burden up to a much higher level, manufacturer level essentially. So what they do is they reach out to all manufacturers in a certain realm, so in this, in this case, I'm speaking on behalf of the ambulance sales. They reach out to all the major manufacturers and they have them submit pricing to them. And then that pricing is approved or denied, and then you're approved, you become a Sourcewell vendor. Courtney, Immersed vehicles plus, we are a Sourcewell vendor. So we are able to provide the ambulances that Garth needs with that pricing in mind and the proposals are priced with that pricing. The other thing it does is allow a little bit of uniformity, like with Stryker, you know, putting the equipment in the the ambulances. If you're able to use Sourcewell and I know that you're buying ambulance for me and I know you're buying the Stryker equipment from Chris, then that allows some cohesiveness, you know, and streamlining the process to make sure that's that stuff can get installed even cheaper than, than having to do a secondary or third party after the fact. So that also helps streamline that part of the process. I gave Kelly and Jeff some documentation last week at the commission meeting. Those are the last two copies I had. But I have a couple, just some general ones here, but just give, they don't give a whole degree of information, but they do give the websites, if any of you would like one of those, I have one of those as well. The other thing I brought with me today is an actual proposal, the specs and drawings for the next ambulance that Garth was looking for. I can leave those with you as well. That gives a good idea, this would be for essentially looking at another ambulance for 2027. I think is essentially where we're looking at. It probably late 27 or late 28, somewhere in that realm. Depending on how, what, what the needs are for the county. But like I said, I have that here as well, I gave a Garth copy and then I have a copy for the council as well. On this proposal, so the county does already have Sourcewell. They already have an account, the account number is 132707. Currently, found county is using approximately $500,000 a year purchasing through Sourcewell already, so it's already a, a practice that the county does use. And utilizes it very well with the street department. Is it mainly the street department, I think, yeah, so like I said, currently, when I reached out to Sourcewell, they said probably $500,000 a year since 2018 has already been purchased using the Sourcewell program. So like I said, it is something that's already been used, being used within the county and it's, it's a great tool to help streamline the, the purchasing process. Now that I've kind of given them free explanation, anyone have any questions?
Obviously, we pay a fee to Sourcewell in order to.
No.
No.
It's free, it was free to register, you guys already had your account. There's an administrative fee on our side to enroll you in that for the, for the bid, but we absorb that internally.
I currently don't have any questions, does anyone else?
Garth, it's Stryker, the equipment side of it.
Yeah, they're the medical equipment side, so they're the power load system, the cops, the monitors, with the vice. Those are the best equipment side, easily gained oversight. You know, as I'm learning more and more, I think this is the right way to go and streamline everything. And lock in there and the price and keep it consistent across the board and not be subjected to price increases every year. Mostly on the, you know, both sides, the ambulance side and the side. You know, as some of you last year had out there, you can set in on the Stryker programs. Typically, they tell you it's 37% when increase, then around 45% right now. So if, if we continue by buying a certain amount this year and certain amount next year, certain amount, you're going to incur that cost. And then you also look at how you want to do preventive maintenance on this side, whereas if you do the whole program together, you know, you get that all put together in one lump sum. And I, as well, Chris here from Stryker, he's got some big work, you know, show you some numbers. Kind of similar to what you saw last year, might be a little bit different in prices than that, of obviously increase. I still strongly push the EMS plus program. That, you know, last year, you guys got to see the two different programs, the ALS 360, which is the premier program, that's the 10 year program. Then your EMS plus program is the seven year program. But one of the pickups we ran into last year was where the price fell. Had to do it in that bidding process, with going with Sourcewell. Same, we don't have to, that Sourcewell program does that for us.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Haskett? You're sourcing.
One last thing I wanted to have a touch on as well is Garth currently has two of our four ambulances, so this will be adding a third. So what that does as well, and one, one of the benefits of using the Sourcewell program is ensures that as you go through the lives, the life cycle of these, of these vehicles and you can replace them with lifetime, it really reduces your maintenance costs and from having to have multiple vendors, multiple points of contact for all your parts and everything like that, so we've become a one point source to be able to take care of everything that it needs. Even as the years go on and you buy more and more equipment, you know, it still gives you, allows you to build on that current relationship, keep that current relationship and everything is taken care of at one place.
Here. Any counties you have in Indiana that is waiting?
It's not counties, so majority of what I do is, I sell it self here, Sourcewell. So major cities. Let's see here, so far this year, I sold Westfield, Bardrewsville, South Bend, Plague County, or Plague County up in St. Phil County. Those are all deals that we've done this year with Sourcewell, it's, it's I used to work for 10 years with the city of Fisher's, Fisher Fire Department, I took care of the whole apartment there. We bought every ladder, pumper, medic, police vehicle, everything that goes through Sourcewell. It, like I said, it streamlines the process, especially for the government body. It, it really takes a lot of burden off of, of, of you for the purchase process. And, and it does streamline your pricing and your, and your bill bill. So, there's several. There are several companies that do it. The, the, the aspect of it is if you, if you find a company that you've done well with in the past, you're liable to continue that relationship. And like I said, I have two, the two newest ones, Carol or Hortons. And then I have a third one, it's a Remal, it's a, so I actually have three whole. So Hortons. Some of them fall away, you know. Box, Dassie.
Chris?
Chris Moore, I'm the Stryker representative for this area, thank you for having me. Sourcewell, I'm just going to piggyback onto that, Stryker definitely on our Sourcewell, so it's really bringing to light to you, there's other ways to acquire equipment, and Sourcewell is one that I utilize as well, because it takes some of the burden off of you as a local municipality during the formal bid process. Take the time to go through it. And then Zolcine, that is what I just utilized that here recently is through us, so as a manufacturer of equipment as well, we definitely see Sourcewell, the fees, like you just said, there's no fees that we inquire from it, it's just how do you want to buy your equipment through us? Through a bid process or the Sourcewell, so you'll have any other questions on that, I just want to piggyback off of what he was stating with, so it was a good way to pursue on buying equipment through a municipality. Garth spoke about the EMS plus program, I printed out some stuff here. Apologize because my wife used up a lot of their names, so someone to tell her about the, it's appropriate. Like, there's two forms here. So this is the EMS plus program we spoke about. Just to summarize it, this is equipment that's needed by the ambulance service at some point, you guys are currently using cardiac monitors through us. Power dots and Lucas devices, the age of the equipment is at replacement, a lot of our cardiac monitors are there's parts that are serviceable for them, cops are older. You're getting power loads in and some of those cops are compatible, and this is also a device that you guys utilize as well, so the EMS plus program takes this as an entire whole package. It gets you what you need today, and so what you'll see on that first page that I sent you is a five year program, it's $168,000 a year. And that's getting you all new monitors, Lucas, cops, but also the preventative maintenance that needed for that, and locks it into today's pricing. And I put down there just some asterisks of just like what that is, it gives you basically one invoice as opposed to a bunch of different invoices that can be cumbersome at times, also having to come back and ask for more money for operational expense, so this is a whole all inclusive package, so you're going to get the new equipment, it's going to cover the new equipment, but also it's going to take care of some of the equipment that we're not replacing today. Like some power loads that they just recently got. So that's just kind of like a known quantity that you know what to expect from Stryker, where I would say that trucks are probably the biggest expense for an ambulance service. But all the medical devices that are in the back of it are also very expensive as well, probably the second most expensive thing that you'll have would be the medical devices in the back. So that second page for the picture of it, if you know my properties, is to just show you kind of a cost justification and an analysis for this, so if you were to go about this of buying equipment, like one, one unit per year for, over the course of five or six years, you're going to accrue some cost, cost change expenses to this, so in this example, if you're to get one monitor a year, a cop a year, and a Lucas a year over the next couple of years, your, your total cost would be about a million dollars if you're going to do that, and that's just having your, your standard price change, conservative estimate. So down at the bottom, you'll just see it's a million, a million and change there. The cost of this program, if you did $168,000 a year, would roughly be $840,000 over that period of time. But you also will have coverage for that, so your equipment's not going to not well maintained, it's going to be well maintained, but also you'll have a year of coverage after that. And you'll see a conservative savings of about $248,000. So that, that's just an analysis page for you that, that justifies why this program does make sense. Price is going up, that's not my decision, it's by my pay grade, you typically look at CPI, what, what stuff costs, and that's why you can see any price changes. This program standardizes your equipment, especially in emergency service area where I used to be a firefighter at PNT. Having standard equipment on each truck makes a huge difference, because everyone looks what they're getting, when they're getting on the tent, what emergency scene. It makes a huge sense from a financial perspective, because now you know what to expect from Stryker on a yearly basis, $168,000. And that would cover your capital expenses, but also operational expenses to make sure your equipment's taken care of. There you go from there, so. Any questions about this so far, this is just a program that Garth and I talked about, I know you've seen some other ones. This one's much cheaper than what I believe been proposed with the past as well.
So this would be for four or five?
So I will let you know through, so many mayor and I don't know, Warren County, just with this EMS program. Obviously, it's in a lesser amount there, they don't have as many trucks. They looked at it very closely also, their commissioners, council. They're proposing they are getting deliverative new monitors, all that, I think in December, or being where some, so firstly, so. But I said it's information for you. I, I wanted you to see what it is and, and also understand that we can utilize the sign of the Sourcewell program. We were moved more with, that's up to you guys, I just wanted you to have these numbers and figures in front of you so you have no idea what, what's there.
And this is just an example, this is some stuff that I've gone back and forth. We could go lesser amount of years, if we go up to like possibly seven years, if you wanted to add this on a longer term, typically people want it shorter, I just did five. That's one that I've been seeing people have an interest in, so like the number of years you can change. You change your, your payments per year, I've also had people that are like, hey, I have some extra money, I have over 2025 years budget. You're allowed to uncover that money, but we're, we use that as a down payment to this to get the, get that number down. But where I've seen this, it's been a big, it's been super helpful, especially with like central lines right here, revenues are coming down in the next couple of years to get restricted or sealed. This is getting you from today, today's price. So where you don't have to run into a huge capital spike in here, three or so, when, when revenues might deal with us with central ones, so I've seen this at work, several different municipalities. Arrow, Honey Creek, some other places, some townships, counties, so. It's just an option for you guys to look at, if you have any questions, please let me know.
If you did a seven year program, would that reduce the total per year that you would pay?
Yes, you can, you're animating it out if you'd like, now, we'd have to make if you're doing a program, we want to make sure there's coverage on that, so we might as well increase the program here on there. If you're doing a program, we wanna make sure there's coverage on that, so we might as well increase the program here on there to make sure that's taken care of. This is a one dollar buyout, so that moves only equipment, it's just a figure of one dollar shade of the new this, this isn't like a. An automobile lease, we do have those if you'd like, where basically it's a fair market value, so your your. Payments per year will be lesser. But it would be two options, either all three options. Buy it as a fair market value of equipment at the end of it, or trade it back to you and get started all over again, or just cut your ties in every set of regular ways. This one's not that one, this is more conservative one where you own the equipment, this is your equipment at the end of it, um it's just a figure of one dollar shade.
So it's like a lease to own with a dollar buyout at the end?
You technically own it, as long as you're making the payments, we wouldn't be talking about the not owning part, but this is yours.
Question Garth of. And see, you didn't put anything in your budget for this. Sure, right, the two hundred, there's two hundred eight thousand, well, I guess two. The two hundred eight of that is for equipment, I put in your investment, like put in. I think if they don't have two thousand two monitors and we were to buy outright. But that's two hundred and eight. If you decide to go to this program. We can utilize that money to 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 purchase that for this program. I did it too often, so option one is if you didn't like to go with the MS plus program, and you guys wanna buy equipment outright. Then what we would look at is if we look at what we could buy with that two hundred and eight thousand. And then next year we would do it again, just keep doing that, now what I did this year. Uh hundred, I think hundred, one hundred eighty six thousand left, took forty five out. So at least be a hundred and forty one. You know, if you got, if we don't go with the program, then we need to move forward with buying some stuff this year, the next year we, the same thing was keep doing that. Or if you decide you wanna go with the program, you can take that two hundred and eight and put it towards the program.
And that's gonna get you. For a hundred and sixty eight, same amount of equipment you were gonna get for two hundred and eight.
That there's gonna wanna be less. We we pared it down, the two hundred eight was a different proposal with some more equipment. And we talked to Garth, like we wanna come up with our best foot forward, I came with my best foot forward on this program, hopefully I can show this one to him, came up there over the weekend. Um and this is what would get him the lion's share of what the needs are for the ambulance service, there's some other stuff like stair chairs that would be. Um a nice to have, like good things that you could get, but the two hundred eight was for additional equipment, this is reduced it down and also best foot forward.
Like I said, I just wanted to bring this situation to you guys, unless you. Thank you, city, and I'll ask you, we should, we'll start here and work back to you guys, but. We brought this to you with the commissioners last week, I'll help you come in and present to you if you had any questions on the. This program. I said, we already utilized it in this county now. Jason and I talked, it's it's worked well for him. I think more about runs to. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Trump.
So I missed the actual. Comparison, hundred sixty eight, we have some. But and then the two hundred, that's you. Or the uh.
If you buy.
Two hundred, two hundred eight is this first year program, two, two cops, two monitors. This year.
And then, but what is it, what does it want to do this year?
It would give me five new monitors, six new monitors, five new, uh CPR.
But you pay that over, you pay that over five years.
Yeah, but your program was gonna be two hundred and eight every year for several years.
Originally, that's what we were doing, because we had a bit more on that package deal.
Yeah.
Um but as these work to numbers, that's where the numbers are at now is at one sixty eight. But if we were not to do the program. And you know, we just bought, you know, monitors themselves. I think the monitor for what sixty. Devices to six thousand dollars, three monitors, almost twenty thousand dollars. And then that's just three monitors, I don't count costs, I don't count power load, Lucas devices. So then each year you're gonna only be able to buy two or three pieces of equipment. For the price of this this program, whereas this program, you're giving it all. That hundred sixty eight over by your period, like you said, you say them on two hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred forty eight thousand dollars, there's really three options, there's just continuing paying cash as is like some counties do, you're gonna. Crew price changes over the period of time, you'll get. X amount of assets today, three assets, three hundred thousand dollars. Or what we had budgeted was two hundred eight thousand, that was for twenty two assets, I hope this one's sixteen assets today. So it's a little bit less bonding things, but you can get by with that, cause that's the lion's share of what they need. So this is a hundred and sixty eight thousand, we get everything they need, standardize their equipment. Make the folks happy, but also help save lives, and also help out put it back injuries for stuff with with the action currently, so. Um those are free.
And updated where they go, so I have two monitors right now, for two thousand elevens. So if those, if we have issues with the monitors. It will cost me an hourly rate for them to come in and work on them. Whereas the other monitors that were within our procurement maintenance program we have. They're covered under that, they'll fix them. So you know, you know, we have to replace those monitors. And if they fail. And feel. Can create potential litigation issues, so that's why Brian stay up on making sure the equipment is safe. Next, you know, like the power load system. So the power load system, if you haven't noticed, it's a, you know, both cod and pull the cod out. Lowerers down and there's no dead, basically no dead lift going in. There's a lot of workers' complaints where people are doing that deadlift going in. One worker's complaining, you can buy five systems. So that's why we we try to encourage. You know, put these power load systems in, we're doing it, we've got three and we've got the fourth one coming. You know, and so that's what we're trying to do.
Look, if you've got the lion's share now, what are the other things that you're not getting? That you will need to replace eventually, what are they much lesser? Uh cost or essential? Item to, or what what type, what is that?
Mainly it was lots of all those power stair chairs, power stair chairs. Stair chairs are what helps when the individuals to get a patient up or down, so it was a two or three story, I know it's safer way of of making efficient up or down.
Yeah.
Um we decided, those are really nice to have, they have some angle stair chairs. They're loaded, but we can maintain those over the course of time, so of things to to take off, that is the first thing that was a call.
How much is it cost for the power stair chairs, what is the?
Uh roughly twenty thousand dollars a piece.
What's? What's a manual?
Manual's five to six thousand, so a lot. Bigger difference. Manual stair chairs are mainly probably going downstairs, so. Our container patient back up, if they're in the basement, we can put paper off the ground for us.
Equipment is beyond what's. I would say in program.
Right, what we have in the program is what we use.
Yeah.
Daily. And we feel those are the priority, and that's the things to be replaced, I mean, we we created a. Cadillac Pro, you know, sit what we wanted, but then we scaled it back, you know, and that, the biggest was is our stair chairs. They are nice, they're they'd be great to have, but. Cost is. We work well with the manual, give you very well, so far.
So the two hundred and eight thousand that you were referencing, you had a hundred and sixty eight thousand for this program. The two hundred and eight would include power stair chairs or manuals?
It was power stairs. And the maintenance for those power stairs, I think there might have been a power load on there as well, but that is giving. If you're with a truck. Purchase, like it's baked into the truck purchase, so that's, so that also came off of there as well.
Let's see.
So uh uh I hear about all the cost savings, um or is the county currently on track to this structure? Or uh because your cost savings actually uh comes from, you know. You know, dealing with old equipment, but it sounds to me like we're at a point where, you know, we're upgrading or we're changing platforms. And so you're talking about this much money, where's the other competitor that would actually? That we could actually talk about cost savings, and does it make sense to go out and get a second bid with, you know, leaving another industry standard? Uh especially when you're talking about seven years or something like this, is it, does it make sense to uh? Pursue another bid or meet with?
Well, we're not in currently any in any bidding process, this is just for information only.
Okay, I I.
Yes, no. No, we we had spoken last year uh for about a program that Stryker offered us, and at that time, we just weren't in a position to move forward.
Yeah.
And um the county currently works with Sourcewell for the highway department, so we thought this might be um. A great uh opportunity for the ambulance department to work with Sourcewell as well. So we're just gathering information.
Does Sourcewell work with other besides Stryker?
Oh, probably.
Yes.
I'm assuming they just.
They, the other companies, but like he explained. So what they do is, is these companies, like you said, they they put bids in. And they're either accepted or rejected. That's what Sourcewell does important, and so that's what they've done, and so Stryker is a vendor. Like uh PD plus on the invoices.
And and I would like to interject, well, obviously I'm not a striker person. But as an ambulance salesperson, Stryker is the only option, pretty much. Um not because of. It's basically because that's the industry standard. There is another company out there, but. In the two years I've been selling in the state of Indiana, I've never quoted or sold those programs. Me for no.
In the in less, although I can only speak for Stryker, we are the the only manufacturer that that. Offers all this equipment. You could go and look at some other other vendors, but they're not gonna offer a cot, a power load, and a cardiac monitor and a CPR device, that would be several different vendors. And so the synergy with this is the fact that I do truly believe in our products, I think the market share shows the fact that other people do believe in it. But also this is just another way of purchasing, if you're gonna be purchasing our equipment through a bid process or whatever, it gives you the synergy of saying, hey, here's one invoice for everything. Here's the budget for the next couple of years, here's the onsite service which Stryker and Hunter don't offer either, cause there's soft costs of if your product goes down. Most people say you efficiently, but it's the manufacturer, that ambulance is down for that period of time, working for the help and support the community, so we have technicians, hundreds of technicians across the. On my, I'm familiar with Stryker, the only point I want to do, cause if anything, we're saving all this money, we're saving all the money, and it's like, okay, well, how much are we saving? And we should have a bid, that's the whole thing. So that's all that.
I think when you go through Sourcewell, each individual manufacturer will submit a bid.
Okay.
So it streamlines the bid process, so to speak, so Garth doesn't have to take time out of his day. To sit down and call all of these people and and say, hey, I need a bid. And then try and sort through it all, so Sourcewell goes and gathers those manufacturers and says, this is what they are looking at, give us your bid. They take those, and they could get one from Ferno. Along with Strykers and give it to Garth, and he has both of them sitting in front of him to look at. So it it basically saves time, effort, and money for Garth, so. I hope I described that correctly, okay.
Garth on the, so get a new power cod or new monitor, it goes bad as a year. You can place there the maintenance on on that. I do, that's I heard that PM, that Pro Care program is what's been built in that program, they come out every year. You, I'll let you describe what they do with Pro Care program.
So it it covers all parts that you travel throughout the period of time there, uh but also it was just being able to PM, so we, you know, got come out. Do a deep dive, go through the the manual, less forbidden maintenance item, but also if they see something else about the veil, they'll they'll take care of that as well, so. It's getting their eyes on it where you're not being as reactive uh as you go out, it's like, hey, this equipment hasn't been touched in a couple of years. Um it gives them their quote unquote label change they need annually, and that's definitely recommended. Um so that's what that, it also covers batteries, so if your batteries go bad, which typically need to be replaced about every every year or two. You can get your batteries and charger replaced as well, so it's just helping you out in this world of. Oh, I gotta get this, I gotta get that, we're gonna help take care of you from an operation perspective, so. Even after that, for that instance, a five year, you own the equipment, we can put more Pro Care on that after the fact too.
So you can buy. A maintenance program, basically.
We combine operational expenses with that capital expense, that's the beauty of this program, and we can also continue to get. Pro Care operational coverage for that equipment, even after the end of the five years.
What kind of expense would that be for the extended uh care?
I couldn't tell you, I'll brag it out on top of my head, but I'd say it's significant, and the reason why I say that is, I believe. The reason why the equipment costs a lot is the parts that consist of it, so my guys going out there to do the work doesn't cost that much in in this one of the things, but if. Say a subassembly goes bad on a cop, which is like the faulty engine or transmission of the cop, you know, that's half the cost of a cop.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't want to expect that uh in coverage from year seven or year eight, not saying that, but. That's gonna happen, but it's gonna be the best, the equipment gets used in environments that is a lot of your share.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move forward. To public comment. Carol. Would you like to start us off? Anyone else? Council, do you have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I'll bring up, uh I talked to Ethan before meeting, we were gonna. Give us the, get the ordinance ready for transferring the next excess money from the special list. To hotel in general, and uh the discovery, we do have to have an ordinance on the tax rate. On special list. And I think we had discussed that, that was one to leave it the same. But we have to give a reason and um. I think basically it's. You know, and the jail's gonna be aging and there probably will be replacements on some parts of it. And also, we don't know what the economy. Might happen with the economy, so uh. I I told you that we would probably want to leave the the same that tax rate. Uh but we do have the ordinance on that, need. If we're in agreement with that, you know, get that prepared, so we can vote on that, and yeah.
Sounds great.
Everybody agree that we leave the tax rate?
Yeah.
Yeah.
On that special, we're the same, we'll leave. Kim, could you? Let Ethan know that uh as as a reasoning, so we discuss this. It's fine, the bad in the ordinance.
Now Carol's question, Carol. Um what's your pension that you guys budgeted for the? Um sheriff? How much do we fight in the file? Hundred eighteen thousand seven fifty two. Say a hundred fifty three thousand, have you?
No, I think it's more than that.
Two eighteen, seven fifty two.
That that's awful.
But then there's another.
Oh, but I don't think we have any money and then. But that it's.
Well, that's one which triangle us, but there's one we can do about it, I guess.
I mean, that's set by the. The state, which I was new and the company tells us how much we have to.
So the state, it's also based on our salaries and. Um. That means we have, yes. And you know. The his department, the Garth's department, how much of it is funded by the tax payer? Oh, um in the ambulance department. Well.
Well, oh, that's a tax payer, but we do collect. Those millions dollars. That they bill, and that goes back in the.
So what's the offset now?
I mean.
What's the difference now? If we collect a hundred, one, what's?
Yeah, it's in, was it two point one one six, one one, well, well. My buddy's point one six would be one one eight.
So, taxpayers are funding about eighteen thousand, eight hundred thousand?
No, no, one point eight.
Twenty eight.
Take a million off that, so taxpayers are funding one point eight million. Carol, that doesn't include the cost of an ambulance, we try to buy new ambulances every other year.
Or the cost of.
Uh, they have a nine and one call too.
Go across to the one county line to pick up any.
There is, there is mutual aid.
Yes, we do. When we transport, when we transport, we charge the patient for that transport.
And how much do we do that idea?
Um, if I have it on my head, we probably are over there. Maybe two, three times a week, maybe. It's not as much as it used to be, because they, they're staffing two trucks a day, so. They, they're more available to take their nine one calls than what it used to be.
So no wonder you can have less trucks in one of you, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, they're, they're predominantly doing, they do a lot, they do a lot of, uh, transfers, so I mean, the trucks are moving all the time, but. More often than not, I mean, actually, it's, I don't know, it's at least three, maybe two, three, four times a week, we're over there picking up nine and one calls.
Do they?
But they don't have to start a payroll, because they're all transfers or on another, nine one call and then nine one ten.
Do they come over and help us too, though, occasionally?
Occasionally, they do. It's the same as the maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Carol, we go into her main guy too. And we go into parking on too. And we've been into the recovery coming too.
Staying on the annual subject, I just wanted to ask the Attica Councilman that were here, do, do you have any? Idea or plan for a building, uh, you know, what's your strategy on that? I don't hate to put you on the spot, but you're here.
Well, we got some ground behind there. We're gonna, where we're set right now is to put a building in that stadium. I've not changed that idea yet. We got a meeting tonight.
We're still, we're also still, uh, I think that, uh, uh, there, there is an option right next to where, uh, city count, or can be a. City hall is and the fire station, the fire territory, and the little building there, I know the chief little had approached the church about the possibility of buying that little store there, that property there. Um, he, I don't think when he approached it, he, he went about it like the way maybe for me to, well, that layer approach. And so, uh, I talked to Brian Kraft, and I asked Brian to see if he could go back and knock on those doors and see what there is upon it. Because that would be the ideal location right there, because in the, um. And I, I brought up the fact of actually using the Attica River from it, because we know all that property, but it seems that. It's upon that side of their assets, it seems to be the problem first, but I use that, no. So, I think we're gonna do this effectively. Ultimately, we did get some information, uh, Duke had, uh. A local office there that took care of some things, they're bringing it out. And they're, they're gonna keep just one person there and then her around that area, so the Duke building also has come available, uh, as a possibility. So, I do know that our budget going forward, Larry does, all of our extra money set aside to build them. You know, so we're gonna have that much money to do anything else, so, um, they tend to change those ideas, but yeah, we'll see.
Thanks, thanks a bunch.
Does anyone else have anything? Citizens? All right, can I get a motion to close the meeting? So. Please, in seconded? Definitely. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, citizens.